I call the El Reno Airport Regular Meeting to order on October eighth, two thousand nineteen at five thirty. Roll call start with trustee Ryder.
Trustee White.
Here.
Vice Chairman Baller.
Here.
Trustee Cronster.
Here.
Chairman Robinson.
Here. Going to consent agenda, the following items are considered to be routine by the El Reno Airport Authority and will be enacted with one motion should the discussion be desired. On any item, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Number one is approval of amendments of the September tenth, two thousand nineteen Regular Meeting of the El Reno Airport Authority. Two is approval of the budget amendments for fiscal year nineteen twenty, ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Three is approval of the claims requiring trustee authorization for the period beginning September first, two thousand nineteen, and ending September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
Motion approved.
Second.
I do have a motion of Ballhorn, second by Cronster. Start with Ms. Ryder.
Yes. Trustee White.
Yes.
Trustee Baller.
Yep.
Trustee Cronster.
Yes.
Chairman Robinson.
Yes. Move on to discussion items, discussion, consideration, possible action to award project number I dash twenty-six, T hangar complex construction, and allow Chairman Mayor to sign all documents associated therefor.
Mr. Chairman, I'll kind of help with this a little bit since Chairman's not here, but I'm afraid he's not here tonight. But the Airport Board, there was just some things that were not done on the bonding of the low bid at the time, and it did not meet the requirements at that time. So we have two options. We can either kick it back out and rebid the project, or we can award it to the second bidder. Now, I think what the process then was done for, this is the third, this is the second time we bid it out. The first time we bid it out, we were one point eight million dollars, I think one point seven three, or whatever it was. Timmy, you were involved with that side.
Two point five.
Yeah, I'm sorry, no, we got two point five, we were at two point five million dollars. And that was with a little small other little add-on here, but we, you were on that, and with your expertise, we thought we'd kick it back out. And I appreciate Council Robinson's work on this, it was a good job by him. So I think we ought to award the contract, and the, or the Airport Board met this week, Mr. Sanchez, and they unanimously agreed to award it to McNatt Company. I think with the timeframe, with what we have going, I don't think we're going to get a better bid at this point in time. The fuel farms aren't already opened back up out there. It's just kind of been a cherry on top at this point in time. So I would make a recommendation that we award the contract to McNatt, W L McNatt and Company, for one million four hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars.
Mr. Mayor, that's, is that not the lowest bid, is that correct?
Well.
You just need to state it in your motion.
Yeah, and the bottom line is, it's, it is the lowest bid that's acceptable. The first low bid did not meet the requirements of the paperwork filled out, so it's kicked out. So the second to the lowest bid would be that amount, which would be one hundred, or one million four hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. So under the recommendation of the Airport Board, and myself, I think we didn't need to go ahead and do that.
And that includes the ad alt- alternate for the bi-fold doors?
Yeah, and we were questioning, you know, what, what happened was, well, if you look at their bids, which I kind of really like, let's talk about that for a minute. Everybody else is charging an ad alternate of three hundred thousand dollars, or a hundred and something thousand dollars. They gave a bonus back of a hundred thousand dollars. So their actual bid was one point five nine eight, but they gave a deduction of, if you use those bi-fold doors. Well, you look at that, like I looked at, the reason why they did that, and I asked the guys, because what they're doing is they don't have to manufacture them on site, they can build the doors, they can go ahead and install them, so they don't have to manufacture them. So they, they save time on the manufacturing side, so it gave a deduction. They'd rather do those bi-fold doors. And Mr. Robinson also came up with a great idea that we ran past, I ran past on the board, and as Timmy and I kind of talked about it, we wanted to go ahead and present to the board. The bi-fold boards are what the Airport people like, because if you do the slide doors, I might slide it open and I might shut you off. And I might slide Roger over and shut him off. Well, they like to visit out there, and then you ask, well, you're talking about a pretty good change to do that. Well, we just said, what if you raise the rent? Would you pay more rent if we allowed the deal? So what we did was, we figured an amortization on that deal, and we come up with, if we charge them more rent, we double the rent, I think it really was. If we double the rent on that, they agreed to that, and they think we can get that, because everything's full out there right now, then it'll pay off the same amount of time that we're talking about. So we're getting a Cadillac of a hangar for the same amount of price, and then we get service to debt that way.
And I believe the rent would still be cheaper than a lot of other.
As a matter of fact, the rent is what we, what I called over the seventies, was a hundred and, twelve, two hundred dollars, hundred seventy-eight dollars cheaper than what it would be for us. That, I mean, that sound right, man?
Yep.
So we feel pretty good about it.
A second.
I got a motion.
I got a motion by Matt, by Mr. Cronster. Ms. Ryder, would you start?
Yes. Trustee White.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Baller.
Yep.
Trustee Cronster.
Yes.
Chairman Robinson.
Yes. Uh, I think we're ready for a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Call the El Reno Recreation Authority Regular Meeting Tuesday, October eighth, two thousand nineteen. Meeting will begin with Ms. Robinson.
Yes.
My name is that?
I got it for you.
Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee White.
Yes.
Trustee Cronster.
Here.
Chairman Baller.
Yes. Consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the El Reno Recreation Authority and will be enacted with one motion. Should discussion be desired on any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Number one, approval of minutes of September tenth, two thousand nineteen Regular Meeting of the El Reno Recreation Authority. Number two is approval of budget amendments for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. And approval of claims requiring trustee authorization for the period beginning September first, two thousand nineteen, and ending September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We'll start with Ms. Baller.
Yes. Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee White.
Yes.
Trustee Cronster.
Yes.
Chairman Baller.
Yes. Motion for adjournment?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
It's now five thirty, and I call the El Reno Hospital Authority Regular Meeting of Tuesday, October the eighth, two thousand nineteen. To order, roll call start with trustee Ryder.
Here. Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee Baller.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Cronster.
Here.
Chairman White.
Yes, we're going to consent agenda. Consent agenda, the following items are considered routine by the El Reno City Hospital Authority and be enacted one motion. Should discussion on that item be desired, that item will be removed, the consent agenda considered separately. Number one, approval of minutes of the September tenth, two thousand nineteen Regular Meeting of the El Reno Hospital Authority. Number two, approval of budget amendments for fiscal year two thousand nineteen and twenty, ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. And also three, approval of claims requiring trustees authorization in the period beginning September the first, two thousand nineteen, and ending September the first, two thousand nineteen.
Motion for approval.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second, motion by Cronster, second by Robinson. Roll call, let's start with Cronster, yes.
Trustee Baller.
Yep.
Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee Ryder. Chairman White.
Yes, we want to do discussion items, discussion items, discussion, consideration, possible action to approve that signed owner interest in agreement between the Hospital of El Reno Authority and the Walter Construction Company Incorporated to the city of El Reno. Basically what this is, we're in the process right now, Kent, you might help us me on a little bit. We're in the process right now of Walter, we're sewing everything up. They're getting ready to, our contract is ready to go out to bid for the healthplex. We have a timeline for that, which is starts this month, this, the end of this month, middle of this month. So they're going out to bid, to the process, the process from the Health Department is completed. The process for the plans of the architects completed, we're waiting on some stuff back in engineering to finalize on the land. But everything else is on, on track at this point in time, is that correct, Kent?
That's correct.
So in order to do that, we want to make sure that we take advantage of the, because the city of El Reno will own this facility, will own the healthplex. And it's saying we own it, and we can take advantage of the non-tax number, so we won't be able to, we don't have to, our business won't pay tax on the material being used on our property. So that'll save us, you know, around less than nine percent on, on that structure. So we feel pretty good about that, that'll help us, you know, accomplish a lot in order to get that deal done. So basically, that's what we're asking for, just kind of signs the owner interest in that deal, and gives Walter the, the construction, the authority to, to use that in order to get those contracts up there to take advantage of the, the sales tax advantage of the city of El Reno.
Motion approved.
I got a motion by Ballhorn, second by Robinson. Roll call, let's start with Ryder.
Yes. Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee Baller.
Yep.
Vice Chairman Cronster.
Yes.
Chairman White.
Yes. Motion for adjournment?
So move.
I got a motion by Ballhorn, second by Robinson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chairman. It's now five forty-one, I now call the El Reno Municipal Authority Regular Meeting Tuesday, October the eighth, two thousand nineteen. To order, roll call start with trustee Ryder.
Here. Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee Baller. Vice Chairman Cronster.
Here.
Chairman White.
Yes, move on to new business, new business conditions, intentions to adjourn time, are there any? The following going to consent agenda, the following items are considered routine by the El Reno Municipal Authority and be enacted one motion. Should discussion be desired, that item will be removed, consent agenda considered separately. Number one, approval of minutes in September tenth, two thousand nineteen Regular Meeting of the El Reno Municipal Authority. Number two, acknowledgement and acceptance of roadway drainage and utility equipped with the D M R E Holdings Incorporated, roadway drainage easement, east forty of the north, nine hundred and twenty-two point four of the southeast fourth, south fourteen, township twelve north, range seven west, in the Indian Marina, and utility easement west, thirty feet of the east, seventy feet of the north, nine hundred and twenty-two point four of the southeast fourth, the south fourteen, township twelve north, range seven of the Indian Marina. Number three, this is a lot written, approval of release of drainage easement located at Crimson Creek North subdivision. Number four, approval of budget amendments for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, twenty, ending June two thousand, oh, sorry, ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. And number five, approval of claims requiring trustee authorization for the period beginning September first, two thousand eighteen, and ending September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. And that's it.
I make a motion, too.
I got a motion.
Second.
I got a second, roll call, let's start with Ryder.
Yes. Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee Baller.
Yep.
Vice Chairman Cronster.
Yes.
Chairman White.
Yes. And move on to E, discussion items, discussion consideration, possible action, approval of claim for Schwartz Paper Company, amount of two hundred and ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-five cents.
Motion approved.
Second. I got a second by Cronster, roll call start with Cronster.
Yes.
Trustee Baller.
Yep.
Trustee Robinson. Trustee Ryder. Chairman White.
You'll stay. Moving on to seven, discussion, consideration, possible action, purchase one. Two thousand nineteen F two fifty crew cab, four by four truck, on state contract for bill nine, four, two, twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-one, and the accessories, and need to equip the vehicle.
Motion approved.
I got a motion and a second. Second by Robinson, roll call start with Ryder.
Yes. Trustee Robinson.
Yes.
Trustee Baller. Vice Chairman Cronster.
Yes.
Chairman White.
Yes. Motion for adjournment?
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Where, Chairman? It's now five forty-five, I'm sorry, five forty-four. I now call the El Reno City Council Regular Meeting Tuesday, October the eighth, two thousand nineteen. Before we start, Cronster, would you mind, everybody standing. Cronster, you lead us to order, you're ordered, please bow your heads. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful fall day, and for the energy and renewal it brings to us as citizens and to our community at large. We thank you for these men and women who volunteer their time to be a part of the business of this city. We pray for our continued growth and prosperity. We also pray for our state and our country, and for all those who may be ill or afflicted. We ask your continued guidance on us, and pray for us in the next upcoming season. Amen. We pray, amen.
Amen.
Join me in the flags, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all, be seated. All right. And move on to proclamations. We'll do the first one, a proclamation of mayor's office declaring October fourteenth, nineteen to be Indigenous Peoples' Day to the city of El Reno. From the office of mayor, whereas the city of El Reno recognizes Indigenous people of the land that would later become known Americas, have occupied this land since time immemorial, and whereas the city of El Reno values and many contributions made to our community through Indigenous people's knowledge in their labor, technology, science, philosophy, arts, and the deep cultural and spiritual contributions that they have sustained and shaped the character of many of the citizens and the community of El Reno. And whereas the city of El Reno promotes policies and practices that reflect experiences of Indigenous people to ensure access and opportunity, and honor our national Indigenous roots, history, and all the contributions. And whereas the city of El Reno supports position of Indigenous People Day should be an opportunity to celebrate the thriving cultures and values of Indigenous people of our community, encourage businesses and organizations, and people, institutions to develop subsistence collaborative relationships with Indigenous communities and tribal governments. And whereas the city of El Reno recognizes beauty and richness of Indigenous cultures, which are dynamic presence of the city of El Reno attracts visitors from across the state, the nation, and the world. I therefore, Matt White, by the power vested in me, city of El Reno, Oklahoma, and all the citizens here, would affirm the claim, the eighth day of October is Indigenous Peoples' Day. And just a side note, I want to make sure we know that, you know, we have a governor, and lieutenant governor, and several people from the, we've been meeting several, over the last probably year and a half. We have had so many great, wonderful meetings. And I'm telling you, the Cheyenne-Abrahah Nation, we're so fortunate to have them, and the leadership that we continue to have out there, we have really built a wonderful relationship with them, and they built one with us, and we really have, really came a long ways. And I tell you what, I really cherish the relationship that I have personally, and I think the city is very lucky to have with them. It's just, it's really, there's a lot of exciting things happening with, with what's going on. The next one would be the office of the mayor, fire prevention room. Now, every hero wears a cape, plain, practice your escape. Whereas the city of El Reno, Oklahoma, is committed to ensuring safety and security for all living, for all those living in the visiting, in the, in El Reno, fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally. All homes and locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire, whereas home fires killed two thousand six hundred and thirty people in the United States in two thousand seventeen, according to the National Fire Prevention Association, M F P A. And the national departments of the United States responded to three hundred and fifty-seven thousand home fires. Majority of U S fires, deaths four out of five occur in each home. And whereas a fire rate of one thousand home fires reported in U S fire departments was percent higher in two thousand nineteen than it was in nineteen eighty, whereas a smoke alarm sounds, El Reno residents may have less than two minutes to escape in safety. Whereas El Reno residents should take a home escape plan drawing, a map, and each level of the home showing the doors, windows, practice at home, the fire escape plan, to everyone in the household, including visitors, at least twice a year during a day or night. And teach children to escape on their own, in case adults cannot find them. And whereas El Reno residents should make sure everyone in the home knows to call nine-one-one and local emergency numbers from a cell phone, on a neighbor's phone, and real emergency should get low and get under the smoke to get out quickly. Get out and stay out, never go back, never look back, and side to the home for people, pets, or things. And whereas nineteen, two thousand nineteen Fire Prevention Week thing was, not every hero wears a cape, plain, practice your escape. Effectively it serves as a reminder that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Therefore, I, Matt White, by the power vested in me, would bring you on to claim October the sixth to the twelfth, two thousand nineteen, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city. I urge all the people in El Reno to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of fire, other emergencies responded to the smoke alarm, sound existing building immediately, and support many public safety activities and efforts of El Reno Fire Department and emergency services during the Fire Prevention Week of two thousand nineteen. Kent, you guys got, Jason, you guys got a lot of things planned this week, and we appreciate you all going out. The guys who are up, the school kids, you got the?
Public schools aren't starting to get tours, taking trade out there, every school, pre-K, A K, first grade, all the way to third grade. How roughly, break it up, students go to their trade every year.
It's a neat deal. Timmy, I'd like to see you crawl through that trailer.
I'll do it.
I'd like to see that video, Dave. Move on to D.
Follow your up through.
I said that. Do, 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 time. There's not, we're going to consent to the, the following items be considered routine by the city of El Reno. Act of the, should discussion be desired, that item will be considered removed, consent agenda, considered separately. City manager recommendably approve, approval of minutes, September tenth, two thousand nineteen Regular Meeting of the El Reno City Council. Number two, acknowledge of donation received, in memorial, Donna Stollie in the El Reno Carnegie Library for multiple donations, in the amount of four hundred and sixty-five dollars. Number three, acknowledge of donation received by the El Reno Carnegie Library from Janice Blanton, in the amount of four thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars for a statue bench in the front of the lawn library. Number four, acknowledge and accept the roadway drainage and utility easement with D M R E Holdings Incorporated, roadway drainage easement, as in authority. And number five, approval of release of drainage easement located at Crimson Creek North subdivision. And number six, pervert budget amendments for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, nineteen, ending June thirtieth, nineteen. Approval of budget amendments for fiscal year of two thousand nineteen, twenty, ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. And approval of claims requiring council authorization for the period beginning September first, two thousand nineteen, and ending September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. I'd like to pull two and three, anybody want to pull any ones?
I'd like to motion we approve item one, and items four through eight.
I got a motion, approval for items one, four through eight.
Second.
I got a motion, second, roll call, let's start with Ryder.
Yes. Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Baller.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Cronster.
Yes.
Mayor White.
Yes. All right, I want to talk about the first one. Donna Stollie was a larger than life fixture, she was just a beautiful woman here in our community, and what a nice tribute that she made to donate, in lieu of flowers, to, to the Carnegie Library. I think the number is, is wrong.
It's increased to five eighty-five.
How much?
Five eighty-five.
Okay, so it's a total of five hundred and eighty-five dollars. So I want to thank Donna Stollie for her acknowledgement, and for her longstanding care for this community. Thank you, and she was a wonderful woman. And then also a lot of knowledge of donation received by El Reno Carnegie Library. This is by Janice Blanton, this Blanton is from this community. I talked to her, Gigi Hopson, was very instrumental in talking to her, with her. Her parents bought the very first doors that were installed in the Carnegie Library. And we're real excited about this, she wanted to do something to ensure this. And once we get ready to open this thing up the twenty-fourth, and she wanted to do something, so we went out with a statue with a little girl reading a book on the outside, so she bought this wonderful statue that we're gonna, we're gonna receive, and we'll put that on the outside lawn. We're gonna do some other things with the lawn, we're trying to get done with the inside, get it all complete first. It's been a great project, I appreciate this work, and it's gonna be a nice, nice, I mean, it's good. So that will be the chair in time. So I make a motion to acknowledge both those two wonderful women, and acknowledge their gift to our community. Second. Motion, second, roll call, let's start with Cronster.
Yes.
Councilman Baller. Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Wright. Yes, Chairman.
Yes. Okay, we're going to F, audience participation, anyone have an item business to present to the city council that does not appear on agenda, you must come to the podium at this time, and state your name, you're requested to limit your presentation to three minutes, and I, and the item is, it must contain the city of El Reno business. Zita, do you want to cover your name? Yeah, this is, I'll, I'll give this patient. Zita, state your name.
Was it to Richie?
Can you read it?
About twelve.
Yeah. Oh, okay, okay. I thought it was something else, okay, we got you. One of us, we almost had you heard. All right, anybody, any audience participation? Zita did not get up here. Any audience participation, all right. We'll go on to G, discussion items, discussion consideration, possible action, to possible action approved claim for Schwartz Paper Company, amount of three hundred and thirty-one thousand, three oh eight sixty-five.
Question, is this, is this different than the claim we approved in authority?
Two hundred, the two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, whatever, is part of this, and that there's a little bit more. We just, because it, that one was.
So this is just adjusted?
So this, since it's bond money, we have to prove it in both authorities.
Okay.
And so this one just had another claim, like thirteen thousand beside it or so, so this was a little higher, but.
Okay, go ahead, Jason. Like when Alros did, when the other companies did that, it was.
That's all I, just because of.
So it's not, not that much more money.
Right, right. Okay, I got a motion by Cronster.
Uh, yeah, for the Schwartz Paper, amount of three hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-five.
Second.
Six five six.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call, let's start with Cronster.
Yes.
Yep.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Wright, it's named Mayor White.
I'll stay. All right, move on to ten, you got public hearing consideration, request by city of El Reno to admit a crossroads point, plan new development, PUD, design statement, tract approximately sixty-one acres, located in township Interstate forty, U S eighty-one, within the northwest four, section twenty-two, township North Range seven, west of Indian Marina, Canadian County, Oklahoma. And that's the city's public hearing, open. Justin, this was brought before the planning commission. Basically, this is Cross Road Point, which is located out by, you don't have to get up here. Which is located out by Wendy's. And the bottom line is, this is based on the new hot, the healthplex that we're riding right now, and the new healthplex. Because of the design of glass and some metal design, there's what they call architectural metal, is that correct? And everybody agreed to that, but the owners of the PUD had to readjust the PUD to accept that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is it against their, uh, uh, co-its, is that correct?
Uh, it's against, it is against the regu- the regular veneer requirements in the city.
Okay, but this, but this is.
This will, yeah.
Well, it was, it was in contradiction to the original PUD, so they had to amend it.
That's why they're not bidding a PUD, that's where I'm getting at, okay. With the planning commission?
Yes.
What it passed by?
Uh, passed five one, they asked for.
It was unanimous.
Was it unanimous?
Yes.
Uh, sorry, there were two of them. Passed unanimously, had a, they, they requested that we define what architectural metals were.
And we did.
So we did that.
Never happened.
That's what the problem, that's what.
Any other questions? Any other comments? Okay. Anybody else have any problems with that? Any other discussion on this? And that's the city public hearing class, we're going to be discussion consideration, possible action, request by the city of El Reno, an ordinance, number ninety-two ten, admitting the crossroads point, plan new development, B U D, design statement, tract approximately sixty-one acres, located this intersection, Interstate forty, U S highway eighty-one, within the northwest four, section twenty-two, township twelve north, range seven, west of Indian Marina, Canadian County, Oklahoma. You got a motion approved? I got a second. Now, motion and second, roll call, let's start with Ryder.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Baller.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronster.
Yes.
Mayor White.
Yes, and move on to eleven, discussion consideration, possible action, an ordinance, number ninety-two oh nine, an ordinance in the city of El Reno, Oklahoma, amending Article three, of the chapter one forty-seven, and the section twenty-three F, of Articles four, section thirty-nine, of Article six, section fifty-seven, Article nine, and section sixty-eight, of Article eleven, of chapter three sixty-one, Dakota ordinance of the city of El Reno, Oklahoma, concerning medical marijuana establishments declaring, repealing, providing for severability, and declaring emergency. All right. So we made some changes to our marijuana ordinance at this point in time, is that correct, chief?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, and we had a group, a working group together, is that correct? And basically, what changes are in the proposal? I'm gonna read these to you. Add language to require compliance with building fire zone, applicable codes prior permit assurance for all uses. This had only previous been called out for lower, for grower establishments. Number two, add language to regulate marijuana's waste disposal. Until two thousand nineteen, the state had very little written about the waste disposal, now has separate license category. This section requires waste disposal operations to be approved by city staff, requires a third-party inspection for any potential recycling or refuge opportunities. Number three, amends language in a section header to make ordinances easier to follow. That's good. Number four, moves language shown to each section concerning the intent by the city in the general section, this is done to make ordinance easier to read. That's even better. Or five, remove the thousand-feet school and three-hundred-feet playground place of worship or correctional institute set back restriction for marijuana growers or processors establishments. This was done because the buildings do not have public entry, is that correct? Number six, bombify verbiage in the grower and added verbiage, the processor regulations required, the facilities must be secured within access limits. This allows secured windows, doors, and other access points to suffer instances where security fixes are not either feasible or possible. Number seven, requires an engineered ventilation filtration system for grower facilities. This allows the city to proactively mitigate potential nuisance of odor issues. Number eight, remove, removes time regulations of processes on establishment. This maintains consistency with grower requirements, has minimal impact on health, safety, and welfare because the processor facilities are not open to the public. Number nine, amends regulations of growers for personal medical use to minor Oklahoma, minor Oklahoma statute. And number ten, amends definitions concerning marijuana in a sign code to mirror Oklahoma state statutes and the regulations of, and the codes of Oklahoma marijuana codes. And number eleven. Uh, amend the sidekick, sorry. Men's setback instant for off-site signage contained to advertising for marijuana to three hundred feet for potential uses to be more consistent with regulatory or dispensaries. Add digital monument like those signs to existing list of permitted on-site marijuana signage. Currently, the only permitted on-site merchandise is the signs on the wall. Allows temporary on-site signs for marijuana establishments on private property to be placed. This mirrors temporary on-site regulations for other businesses. And number fourteen, changes the list of approval zoning districts for marijuana establishments. Okay. Any questions? Any questions, any comments? Do I have a motion for approval? I make a motion to approve. Second. I got a second by Robinson, roll call, let's start with Ryder.
Yes. Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Baller?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Cronster?
All staying.
Mayor White?
Yes, motion carries.
Motion for emergency.
I have a motion for emergency?
Second.
I got a second, roll call, let's start with Ryder.
Yes. Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Baller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronster?
All staying.
Mayor White?
Yes, motion carries. All right. Twelve. Discussion consideration possible action approved assignment of owner's interest in the grid between the hospital authority and Wolford Construction and the City of Reno.
Motion to approve per authority.
I got a motion approved per authority?
Second.
I got a second, roll call, let's start with Ryder.
Yes. Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Baller? Vice Mayor Cronster?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes, move on to consider, consideration possible action to authorize an marketing campaign at the El Reno Tribune. Done this before, it works out great, so. I got a motion approved?
Second.
Second, my Ryder, roll call, let's start with Ryder.
Yes. Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Baller?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Cronster?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes, we'll move on to discussion consideration and action on license application by Liza T. Ritchie to operate tax cab within Simmons. Now, Zita, okay, come on up. Okay, now here's, she, here's what I got, I just got to hold this down, Zita. So she applied for this license. He got, he got, I got to ask the power back here. So she applied for a license for, for a cab, is that right?
That's correct.
She has to apply for that, she's filled the paperwork yet, where does Dustin go? Okay, so she's got everything that she's filled out on, is that correct?
Yes.
So there's no reason for us to deny, her, her option was to fill this out and she filled it out, she has all the paperwork that's informed for this license, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's your pleasure.
It is my pleasure. Any other questions? I mean, she filled the form out, she's ready to go. All right, any questions, Zita? I'm, I'm gonna take care of you.
Okay.
All right, there we go. I'll save you some. All right, I make a motion, we approve her license, it's all, she's got everything she needs, she's ready to go, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion, second, JT, roll call, start with JT.
Yes.
Councilman Baller? Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Cronster?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. We'll move on to fifteen, discussion consideration possible action to award project number one twenty-six, T-Hanger conflict, destruction, and allow Chairman White to sign all documents associated there, too.
Make a motion per authority? Second.
Got a motion in the second? Roll call, let's start with JT.
Yes.
Councilman Baller?
Yep.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Cronster?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes, move on to sixteen, discussion consideration possible action to trigger special events permit, alcohol beverage permit for Primos Restaurants and Bar, and catering for the El Reno Carnegie Library grand opening to take place in October twentieth, two thousand nineteen. We're excited, it's gonna be fun, it's gonna be pretty cool.
What's the date?
The twenty-fourth.
My second.
No, this deal is the twenty-third.
Twenty-fourth.
Okay, twenty-fifth is the Saturday, twenty-fourth is the Friday. And we're doing that after the spook tape, right? All right, I like it. I got a motion?
Second.
Second.
All right, roll call, let's start with Ryder.
Yes. Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Baller?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Cronster?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes, we'll move to seventeen, discussion consideration possible for board, it's number nine two eleven, an ordinance of the City of Reno, amending chapter two fifty, parks, and recreation, park one, Lake El Reno, Article one, jump provisions two fifty of ten, camping permits, fees, regulations, and restrictions, repealing ordinances of conflict, providing for severability, and declaring emergency. All right, Mr. Brown, we talked about this today a little bit, and basically, we want, in this ordinance, we want to move, well, it shows we want to move the days for the tents and RVs to fourteen days. We really don't want to do that. I mean, we gotta get control of the tent deal out there, we need to really do some research, you know, I looked up Fort Cobb. We need to kind of get in depth, and Mr. Brown currently working hard on that, we have some ideas that we'd like to bring back to you next month. Maybe change it up a little bit, Bob, to see kind of what fits, other lakes and everything else. But I would like to allow, right now we have about seven days in the RV, let's allow fourteen days and go ahead and do that deal. Because people are traveling from snowboarding, they're coming here this way, they're going, staying here for fourteen days with their family, and then they're moving on to Arizona or wherever else they're going, to South Texas, and they can't, they're in that ten, two-week period. And most all, the ones we saw, they was fourteen days, is that right, Ken? So we want to, we want to stay in line with what all the other RVs are used to, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So if you would allow us to basically change this with the correction of just the fourteen days on the RV park and strike the tent, you know, at this point in time?
Or RV campers and travelers.
Yeah, RV campers and travelers, right. Fourteen days, and then the tents, just leave them right now for seven days until we get a better handle on where we can, what we can do to make sure we don't have anybody living out there or anything else. That's not what that's for, this, that out there is for recreational use only, and we need to make sure we keep it that way.
To clarify motion, in ninety-two, one one, it's, right now it says primitive camping for fourteen, we're changing that to seven.
No, we're changing, it was, it was seven, we're changing to fourteen.
Primitive, primitive.
Oh, yes, yes, we are changing, the proposed deal, we're changing it, we're changing it. We're leaving the tents at seven and RVs be, be the fourteen. So I'm striking, I'm striking the tents completely and making them seven days.
Well, you're approving this, this new ordinance and you're putting it from fourteen to seven on the primitive, I guess.
Well, I think, everybody from you and Roger and Lindsey are all saying the same, exact same thing I'm saying up here, except you three are trying to argue with me. Just strike the first line, E, under that one.
Well, I can't because then it won't be in the actual ordinance at all.
That's right.
So I'm saying change it from fourteen to seven, right?
Sure.
Okay.
Second.
I got a motion, on Lindsey's motion, oh, no, it's not Lindsey's motions. I make that motion and I got a second by JT. Roll call, start with Ryder.
Yes. Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Baller?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Cronster?
Yes.
Mayor White?
No, yeah, Kenny? You gonna make emergency?
Oh, yeah, very much.
Second.
Second. I got a motion, second, roll call, let's start with Ryder.
Yes. Councilor Robinson?
Yeah.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Baller?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Cronster?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes, all right, we're going to reports. Uh, Matt, send you guys in. Oh, no, I can, thank you, Bob. Marsha, presentation of financials. We haven't, we haven't got the sales tape report yet, we're kind of waiting for that, so. Okay, and then when we get back, that'll be our three-month mark that we talked about for the capital outlay, so we'll revisit that point in time, that's where I'll kind of, I've asked for it three times, it'll last four days if we've got to proceed with it. Okay, JT, go ahead then.
Go, sir.
Bob?
Timmy? I've had a lot of complaints on your city inspector back there, so. I'll have a drink.
We have to. Now, we're glad to have the season. All right, Tracy?
Um, what's the update on the kiosk out here?
On the municipal court part?
Uh, the utility billing part's working right now, we had some problems with the municipal court with warrants and how it worked, so we shut down, but they're working on it right now.
Uh, it still takes pavilion rentals and, and our rentals, things like that, right now it's going good.
But I did talk to, a good friend of mine is a clerk in Altus, and Tracy runs that, they have one and they have contact, I think they're figuring that out now at this point in time. And they have to go to income, so it has to be, you know, so that'll be another, another way that people will have to come in here and pay, they can go out there and take care of it.
They're rolling.
Yeah, yeah, I like it, everything's, everything's kind of coming good. Okay, any other questions? All right, on the financials, uh, Tracy, anything else? Okay, I don't have anything, let's go into executive session.
Make a motion we enter executive session.
Let me read them real quick.
Sorry, after you give them read.
After reading, yeah. On nineteen, consider reconvening executive session, offense, take statutes twenty-five, section three oh seven B, to discuss the work claim against the City of Reno received by Ms. Nicholson, three, I'm sorry, two zero six eight nine four M E, reconvening to open session, formal action, said claim. Uh, consider convening executive session, six statutes to receive work claim against the City of Reno, Ms. McNally, twenty seventy-six, seven, six, seven, three, four, L R, and reconvening in open session, and finalize said claims, and twenty-one, consider reconvening in, uh, executive session, for open six statutes, twenty-five, section three oh seven B three, to discuss appraisal of property, purchase real property located in the park of Lockton, two, section five, township twelve, North Range seven, West Indian Marine, Canadian County, Oklahoma, and sixteen eighty-one, North Chalk Hill Avenue, El Reno, Oklahoma, and contain three point two nine acres, more or less, and take appropriate action, open session.
Motion we enter executive session.
I got a motion enter executive session, you got a second? All, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Make a motion we enter regular session.
Second.
I got a motion, second, roll call, let's start with Ryder.
Yes. Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Baller?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Cronster?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes, all right, number nineteen, consider action, on Jolynn Nicholson.
Make a motion we deny, on nineteen.
Okay, I have a motion denied?
Second.
I got a second, roll call, let's start with Ryder.
Yes. Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Baller?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Cronster?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes, number twenty, consider, I'm sorry, action on killing the mill.
Make a motion we deny, item twenty.
All right, a motion nine, twenty?
Second.
Second, roll call, let's start with JT.
Yes.
Councilman Baller? Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Cronster?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes, all right, number twenty-one, consider any action on the property?
Make a motion we...
I said we don't take any action.
Correct.
Okay, she just won't take any. All right, motion for adjournment?
So move.